There you go. You're good to go.
Okay. We'll go ahead and call to order this working session for PrAC for December 6th, 2018. The purpose of the working session is to interview candidates for membership on PrAC.
And we did have a member of the committee ask me if we could have a short conversation before interviews to speak to the two members from every neighborhood association or from any neighborhood association as written in the bylaws. I'll open up to Troy, maybe if you want to.
Yeah. Just a couple of concerns that I have. A little bit of this process, I expressed those a little bit in the email about the individual who was not present. And so I've made some suggestions on that. And that, I guess, is kind of going to get postponed. But then as far as this, we've got information that on the applications is redacted, which I don't remember that being the case in past. And of course, I've never been on the committee to make that selection. So, but I remember when I applied, they had my address because they asked me about it right here from the DIAS. So I'm curious as to why we're doing that now. The other thing is we have in the bylaws, it suggests or says, there shall be eight members at large and one designated representing, designated member representing Pioneer Community Center. No more than two members at large may reside outside the city limits. Members shall represent broad range and so forth. And then it talks about two members, no more than two members from a particular neighborhood. And I guess my biggest issue right now is we have an application, two of us are in the McLaughlin neighborhood. We have an application from Mrs. Miller, who is also in the McLaughlin neighborhood, which would make three. So according to the bylaws, that's ineligible, in my opinion. Yet Mr. Dashler submitted an application and we're not reviewing that one because we're deeming it ineligible because of term limits. So my question is, why are we not allowing one to present based on ineligibility, yet we're listening to another who is also ineligible? And I just want to make sure we're being consistent and transparent on are they both ineligible and we're not going to listen to the interview or we're not going to review the applications? Or are they both potentially eligible, I would say? More likely, I would say, I would recommend we listen, we hear the applicants, and then we decide if we want to recommend an exception to the bylaws based on what we hear, rather than turn people away.
I had also an addendum, what you're speaking to. I saw that most of us probably received your latest email regarding perhaps an extension on candidates. There'll be an opportunity for more to apply. Did I read that correctly?
Yes, it's currently open.
Dialogue with the mayor.
Yep. So the mayor requested that, given the applicant pool that we currently have and the one applicant's inability to be here for interviews tonight instead of using the pre-recorded interview, that we just bump his interview to a later time, continue to hold the application process open on the website, and then interview that gentleman as well as any other candidates that are available between now and then at a later date. So whether that's the January meeting or we wait until February or whenever is a good time for the, for the committee.
Right. Chris brought this up. But do we know what categories the people that are not, we do continue, what categories they're in? And does that free up any of these categories? Or do you know?
It does not free up the McLaughlin neighborhood. The other one I do not know.
I don't.
Actually, did you, you sent me that? Is that what you're sending? Okay. I said, I knew that answer.
So I was going to hand this out later when we were having the conversation during the regular session. But it lists basically the neighborhood representation from each of the neighborhood associations, who our current members are as of right now, that will continue for the 2019 calendar year. And then potential members and which neighborhood association they represent, well, which neighborhood association in which they reside. And so, you know, the, the one thing that I, that I brought up, and again, I, it's, it's your committee, I really, you know, whatever way you guys want to go with it, I would support. The one thing that I brought up with, with Chris and Lisa when I sent an email earlier to them was that the, it kind of contradicts itself in the bylaws just a little bit. And it lists, so no more than two members shall reside within the same neighborhood association, but it also lists, no more than two members at large may reside outside the city limits. So that's not taking into consideration the Pioneer Center rep position in that sentence. It says to me that maybe we could have two at-large members outside of the city limits. And additionally, we could possibly have one Pioneer Center rep also outside of the city limits.
I remember when we wrote these, rewrote these bylaws specifically on that one. And we were urged to write it that way very intentionally because the Pioneer Center served a much broader area of specifically the seniors. And so that was a very intentional piece. And also we were, at the time, the context was probably, we were having a hard time finding Pioneer Community Member reps.
Yeah.
How is at-large defined? That is, can the at-large member be a member of a neighborhood association already has two members?
The at-large, I think it's referencing anyone that's not the Pioneer Center rep would be an at-large member.
But there are two, no more than two.
No more than two may reside within the same neighborhood association.
Is the Pioneer Center added on to neighborhoods? Or is it, it's not a distinct separate entity?
So it's added.
I thought that's, that's what I was told.
I thought it was separate but equal.
Since there should be eight members at large and one designated member representing the Pioneer Community Center.
This sounds to me like.
So I think that takes away the concern over what neighborhood they live in.
It takes away the what?
I think that takes away the concern of which neighborhood they live in.
No, it, well, it doesn't entirely because if we say there shall be eight members at large and one designated member, it doesn't say to include. So it's, and it's in addition to, to make nine members, right? Then we have no more than two members at large. So no more than two of the eight can reside outside the city limits, which means the Pioneer Community Center can, which is to Sean's point. And then if you go to the other part, no more than two members. It doesn't say no more than two at-large members, which means no more than the nine, no more than two of the nine shall reside within the neighborhood association.
Right. They're on two different pages in two different categories.
Now, if you were to say no more than two at-large members, then that would be two of the eight. But the way it's written, it's two of the nine.
I would agree.
So my, and my, my point is this. I mean, it'd be wonderful if we had, if we never had this problem again, because we have a lot of, a lot of associations that aren't represented at all. And that's by their choice. So it'd be nice if we had more interest. But I would suggest to allow, to us to interview and review an application from somebody who we know, according to these bylaws, would be an exception if we granted that. Then I think Mr. Dashler's application and interview should be granted too, because that is knowing, would knowingly be an exception. So either they're both admitted and then we choose, and we decide if we're going to allow exceptions, or they're both ineligible because we aren't going to allow exceptions. Not one and the other.
I just posed a question. Are we allowed to allow exceptions? I mean, these are our bylaws.
Yeah. So, and I, so we, in your email, I think it was, or in our conversation, there, there could be an option of asking a member that's, whose term has expired to stay on until we do get a viable candidate or applicant, right?
Correct. So the, I think in the interest of time and of our, our candidate that is waiting to be interviewed, maybe we focus this conversation on whether or not we want to interview all applicants. And then we can't actually make a decision during a work session. So maybe during the regular meeting, we continue this conversation and then we can make a decision on whether or not we choose to go down which path. I will say that the, the direction I received from the city recorder, who works with the mayor for the appointments and generally manages our documents and kind of processes, has stated that it is typical that they may only serve two consecutive terms and then they are termed out. If they are to, if they were to continue into the next term, they could, to Chris's point that you just brought up, they could do so until a permanent applicant could be appointed. So if this group decides to offer up to Sean and Sean's interested in continuing, we could have him continue on PrAC until the permanent position is filled for that three-year term. And then he would be eligible again, starting the next cycle, which would be January of 2020. But that they need to skip basically one term technically before being able to continue in a, in a position for a three-year term. So that's, again, that's the direction I've received from staff who work with all of the boards and committees and works with the mayor to do appointments. Again, we can always ask for, you know, the alteration to that at some point. But I think probably in the interest of time, we can have that conversation during the general meeting. But if, if we would like to interview Sean, and I believe we had a short phone conversation before the meeting tonight, and he's stated that he's willing to, to interview tonight and have that conversation.
I don't see any point in interviewing him. He's just continuing to fill the position until someone else is appointed. We're not, we can't reappoint him.
Well, actually, we can.
No, we can't.
We can, because here's the issue we have tonight, or at this point in the process. We have three applications and three vacancies, if you include Mr. Dashler. So I think in fairness of the process and in the interest of transparency, we interview everybody. And because if we have three applicants, three vacancies, we're done. Right? And at that point, we may choose to draw an exception to both two members of an association, of a neighborhood, and term limits, because we don't have any other choice if we have three applicants and three vacancies. So I think we need to interview everybody. And if Mr. Dashler's not prepared to do that tonight, I think it's only fair we give him a chance to do it some other time. But if he's ready tonight, then we do it tonight. If we say we're not going to interview him because we don't need to, that's not fair to our other two applicants who are in the hot seat for another few minutes and they can answer questions.
But you're not appointing them.
This is, and this is a process issue, I think. The mayor makes appointments, we make recommendations.
True.
I do, I believe, I believe the process in making exemptions is to request, actually the commission to make an exemption to the bylaws. Otherwise, I don't think we have any power to do anything. So, and so I don't, I mean, I don't think even the mayor can himself make an exemption. I think the commission could. So I think that's a process. And I agree. Go ahead and continue with the, with the interviews. And then we can make recommendations at a later point in time. And if the issue still is there at that particular point, make recommendation that the city commission can grant exemptions so that we can.
If we need it at that time, yeah.
I agree.
So out of our, out of respect for our candidate that is here, I think we need to start the process.
Yep.
So, Ms. Miller?
I've already said she doesn't qualify.
Well, to Troy's point, I think it's fair to, I mean, enter the candidate. They've made it here, they set the time aside. I'd still like to hear what they have to say. Anybody disagree?
No.
No, I think it's fine.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi.
Okay. Who would like to start? Want to start down on your end, Roger? Do you have any other questions?
Hi.
Hi.
Let's make sure we're all ready here. You're going to ask your own? We're trying to figure out, Chris, if Sean is present for this or if he needs, since the discussions, we don't hear, since the candidates don't listen to others' interviews. Well, or do we? We have them all in the room right now. Okay, fair enough.
I sat and listened to everybody else.
Actually, this is a public meeting and people can be here.
I just remember last year when I did it, they had us leave and come in one at a time.
I listened to everybody.
Good question. Whatever you know. Sure, boysen. All right, go ahead, Roger.
Hi, Nanette.
Hello.
How long have you been work volunteering at the Pioneer Center?
We moved here June of 2016 from Indiana. And I stumbled upon the community center about August. So I've been involved since then.
How close did you live to Chicago?
Oh, two and a half hours.
Excuse me?
About two and a half hours.
Okay. So you didn't get there very much. What were the parks like where you lived? Was it a rural town? I'm not, I'm not familiar with that.
Yes, we used to have one, one stoplight in our town growing up. So we had a cannon park and a swing park. The swing, there was swings in one park and cannons the other, in the other. So that's kind of my experience with parks.
Okay. So do you, have you been to most of the parks in Oregon City?
A lot of them. We walk a lot. The walking group that I'm with. And so we do like Waterboard Park. We go across to West Lynn and go into some of their parks. And yeah, we hit around, we try and get in as many hills and stairs as possible. So.
My only allowed one question. I'm going on.
For consistency, it's nice to go down the list.
Make the rounds and then we can come back.
Well, wait a minute. I thought we could make up our own question.
You can, you can. It's just.
Thank you.
Be consistent.
Do you, okay, I lost my train of thought now. So do you, in your, in your travels through the parks, do you see anything like a red flag or something that you, you really appreciate about Oregon City Parks? That's my last question.
Well, I'm, I'm so impressed. Not only with the parks, but the community center too. That's why, you know, we allow myself to be put up for this because I feel very strongly that the community center is just such a wonderful part of the town. And as far as the actual parks and what I, I see, of course, some red flags. I mean, we get harassed every once in a while from homeless people and that type of thing. But a lot of trash that surprises me. I went to school out here in Oregon in 1973 in Portland. It was such a clean area. And I'm, I'm a little bit sad about that, how that's changed.
I have a, I have a statement. I'm not sure her microphone is on. Is that red light on in front of you?
Yeah, it's on. I may be not speaking into it.
Thank you.
Uh huh, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to be dull and read number two. Do you have previous or current experience serving on other boards and committees?
Lots of church committees over the years.
So organizing them, leading them?
Yeah.
I've been there, done that too.
Well, the question is what issues facing the city. But I'll just say, and it comes back to, to Roger's question. But you were talking about, about the parks. Are there any issues that you're aware of in the city that concerns you about parks, other than the trash issues and the presence of homeless people?
No. No. Unless you guys close down Waterboard Park, because we like to walk up there.
Ms. Miller, what, what do you think are the biggest issues facing the city right now?
You know, I really, I really can't say. I guess I feel like I'm too new to have much history on that and really know of anything. I just love Oregon City.
Pioneer Center. We love Pioneer Center. I think it's a wonderful place.
It is.
If you could wave a magic wand and could make any improvement, what would it be?
You stole my question.
I guess I'm so impressed with it. I'm having a hard time coming up with anything. The people are so kind, you know, to the people that come there. Gosh.
Would you do anything to promote it to other citizens? What would you do?
I talk about it a lot. We have nothing, nothing like this in Indiana. And I honestly did not have one friend when we moved here. And now I've got a whole circle of friends. I mean, it's, it's been my social outlet. I go there for painting, Scrabble, walk. And so I, I just think it's just a wonderful place for people to go.
Thank you.
Well, since she took my question, I'll just broaden it a little bit. Have you have a cemetery and 43 parks? What are some of the other facilities that stand out that you, that you enjoy and why? And the pool, for example, you know, there's, pick something.
Yeah, I've not been there. I've not been to the pool yet. Aside from parks, you're asking?
Well, no, just part, I mean, so the park facilities include the cemetery and include the pool, the Pioneer, these buildings. And so what are some of the other places that you've been able to recreate or experience?
You probably think I'm really boring, because I'm going to say walking again. We walk at the cemetery. We walk, you know, so many of the different parks and places. I, I'm not even sure if they're really parks, like Kanema. We'd love to walk in Kanema. Try and do that once a week or so.
Well, let me make it easy for you and ask you a follow-on to the walking. Because in our group, I think we've seen some deficiencies in the walking ability in Oregon City. What kind of things like that have you recognized that could improve that?
Wow. I haven't thought of anything.
There's one, so I'll, I'll tell you the, Doug's always pushing for better signage. So you can see, I can get from here to there. And that's one thing that this group has been really advocating for. So.
That would be helpful.
Good.
Yes. And sometimes safer sidewalks, too.
Absolutely.
That would be one thing.
Thank you. Couple of questions. First, this is a little more of logistics. So pardon me. I don't, I'm familiar with the community center, but I'm not familiar with the inner workings of it. So you lead a walking group. Do you, in addition to that, hold a position in there? And I don't, and I'm not going to ask this the right way. So try to, hopefully you understand what I'm asking. In other groups that facilitate, I don't know if I'd say administration, but kind of overseeing it and all that, you're leading, so you, so you as a representative would be coming as a user of the facility, a community member, but you have led some groups within there? Am I right?
Yes, you put the nail on the head. That's exactly right.
I know it kind of went around a little bit. So I'm not really sure how, I guess you could say the hierarchy, for lack of better term, works over there.
No, I'm just, so, I mean, just volunteer at that.
Okay, fair enough. And then, this is kind of an ask. I'm going to ask it a little different way. Maybe it's the same thing, just asked a different way. Maybe it's a different question. But you've seen a lot of facilities with walking, the cemetery, the parks and different things. What do you see within the park system of Oregon City is the system's greatest asset?
The physical beauty of it.
So what, the view, what you see?
Yes. And just that is here. You know, and again, you have to understand where I'm coming from. Indiana is as flat as this table. So I just love, you know, that you've got steps, you've got hills, you've got beautiful places to see, there are mountains and the river. And it's just that you have so much here that I just appreciate it.
And then on the other end, what do you see is the greatest challenge? When you're out walking around, what's the thing that you see over and over that's somewhat consistent with the parks or some of the parks?
Well, the only thing, like I mentioned before, is it would be the sidewalks. You know, that would be something, or a safe path sometimes. Sometimes the ladies kind of say, you know.
When you say sidewalks, you're talking about the city sidewalks or within the parks themselves?
I would say city sidewalks.
Okay.
Probably more is what I'm thinking about.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, Nanette.
Hello.
I'll ask you the, one of these pre-printed questions, which is probably appropriate, since then the last one here on the panel. Is there anything else you would like to tell us about in terms of relating to why you want to be on this board in the selection process?
I guess I would like to do it because I was asked to do it by the ladies at the community center. And, you know, that meant something to me, being this new to the community. And obviously, they felt I could be an asset to the community center. So I'd like to serve.
And you wouldn't have any problem making the meetings every fourth Thursday of the month, then?
No.
Very good. Thank you.
Anybody else have?
Do you know, do you know of other public facilities besides actually the physical parks that we have in Oregon City that are under the parks?
I don't.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you so much for your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next candidate is Derek.
How you doing?
Good. All right. Come on, go ahead and start again, Roger.
Thank you.
Look, I put you on the spot.
Hi, Derek.
How you doing?
I guess I'll, I'll ask sort of the same questions I asked before. So have you been to most of the parks in Oregon City since you have a, here?
Any park that involves EU sports?
Okay.
Yes. And which I pretty much would cover them all, I believe. I've spent the last, you know, 10, 15 years coaching. So I'm well aware of them.
Are you familiar with Kanema Waterboard and, okay, good. So do you see anything in the parks that you, you think is anything glaring or anything that you think is, you know, just really, I know that, I know that from reading your background, you're, you're doing the sports in the parks. So do you see anything glaring or positive, really positive, that you think you could tell us about the parks?
Well, park-wise, essentially, from my background, you're looking at just upkeep. It's very hard to keep those parks and those fields usable, especially in the weather and the sports and the amount of kids around there, whether it's baseball or soccer. I mean, I think the, the folks that are involved in the upkeep have done a phenomenal job. There's always, you know, I'd always like to see improvements. I mean, I mean, you always have, you know, a measure, you know, potholes or gophers or whatever it is. But I would never say anything negative to them because what a difficult job with the amount of people coming through and the amount of kids on those parks. I think they do a really good job. As far as, that's what I see on, my experience.
Thank you.
A lot better than some of the places that we've gone, you know, out there in other cities.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I still be boring and stick with number two. Do you have previous or current experience serving on any other boards or committees?
Boards and committees, not. My background, when I was younger, I was involved in state politics at a, at more of a state level. So in and with work and, and kids coming through, I've moved out of that realm. Now, the, oh, the kids, they're, they're in the Oregon City, you know, school district, obviously. Kind of moved beyond, they're at the age or a little beyond my coaching. So I've decided, well, okay, now I need to be actively involved in the community. Now, next up is, this is what I was looking at.
Okay.
All right, you were consistent. I want to ask you a question. If you, you mentioned the Pioneer Center, other than, other than feels and the open parks and so forth, do you know there are any other facilities that the Parks Department runs?
I'm well aware of the, the pool. Personally, I do a lot of athletics myself. So I'm, I'm a big swimmer. So I'm well aware of the pool. I'm well aware of the library. In fact, I would have, I looked at that committee. But since my wife works there, I thought it would be a, what, a conflict of interest? She said no.
That's a conflict.
It's the real conflict, isn't it? Yes. You know, I looked at the parks and rags because of, just because of my background and my, and my interest of the athletic part. You know, the Pioneer Center is probably, I'm, you know, I'll be honest, I'm not too familiar with that. I'm much more familiar with, you know, like the library.
But you knew about the Pioneer Center, though.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Derek, what do you see is the most important issues facing the city right now?
Population control and work room.
I'm sorry, population control and what?
And where, and, and how to sustain the, our level or, you know, our, our lifestyle and our level of living with the increased population coming in. And how, how we're going to be able to retain the, you know, the parks, the forests, that nature outlook. I live toward the college, you know, I run there a lot. Probably, you know, and the college is not involved, but, you know, they've done a lot of work through there. They removed a lot of trees and such. I don't know if they may be aware of that. Wasn't making some of us real happy. I know they need to. I know they need to expand and grow, but that's a type of thing I'm looking at, you know, keeping that, you know, that, you know, that feel that we want here. Are they gonna, you know, we were just talking about this a couple of days ago, are they gonna, you know, what are they gonna do with the airport and the golf course? You know, it was a few years ago, that was all going to turn into, you know, houses. So where are we at on that? That's a, one of the big things for us, me and my family.
Those, of course, are private, private properties and don't belong to the parks.
No, but, you know, just as a, in line.
Holistically. What do you feel are the city's greatest parks and recreation deficiencies and where it needs?
Well, from a strictly selfish area, you know, as far as athletics, you know, and I don't know if this could be addressed in, just, you know, the parks and rags, but we're lacking in bicycle, you know, availability or, you know, safety and bicycle routes. I, you know, I do run a lot, the parks are great for that. I don't run at night a whole lot, I'm not familiar with how lit and safe they may be. But I do know that the bicycle safety in Oregon City is very poor, especially up top. When you get down below, it's a little different, but that's one thing that I'm aware of, that's just, I don't know how that could be worked into the general, you know, I overheard the previous interview about Mr. Neely and his directions. I think that would work, you know, that's one, that's something that pirk my ears a, as far as, hey, we can, we could use that for, you know, like say bicycling or, you know, or even running and that type.
Okay, real quick follow up, have you ever been to Park Place Park? Over in the Park Place neighborhood?
I'm not good at names. I'm, you know.
Okay, just, just wondering, you know, what your opinion was of that. It's, it's a small park, it's about five acres, and I was curious about it, if you had ever been over there and what you would do to improve it.
Oh, what can you?
Yeah, I'd like to hear your opinion.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I tried to, you know, I, I know I'm short on some of them, you know, that, you know, I'm out toward Beaver Creek, you know, and most of my experience is toward there and in the parks, and I'm, I'm so bad at names, but, you know, the ones out on, all the big ones out, out south end or, you know, or whatever they call it, Warner Mill.
Oh, Warner.
Chapin.
Yeah.
Chapin.
That one and then the other one up toward, past Winko, ain't left out there.
Yeah, Wesley Lynn, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Once I hear it, I'm good, then.
Yeah.
I'm notoriously bad on it.
So, so we've heard a lot about the sports related side, and so let's try to switch gears, and I guess my question would be more related to some of the other things that the department does, and, and can you maybe expand on some of those other things that you've experienced, whether it be a pool, community programs, events at the Pioneer Center? Are there anything like that that you've had some experience in or that you use?
Well, other than, other than the pool and, and, the Pioneer Center, no, I have not.
The pool, let's go there, that'd be a great one. What's, what's your take on the pool? Needs, positives, negatives?
Well, the only thing that, the facilities are wonderful. The availability, timing wise, is the issue that would jump out at me.
And I agree with you.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a good one, yeah.
I've looked, I don't know how many times I've looked, you know, and to hold a family down or the kids or whatever, and it's very limited.
Yeah, I've seen that, too. Thank you for your comment.
Yeah, I guess that rings a bell, but yeah, that's my main thing on, on that. And within my work, I've dealt with the community. We call them community events where we're doing, whether it's, you know, Relay for Life, different types of, you know, organization and fundraising, stuff like that.
Great, thank you. So Derek, you mentioned in your community involvement, you says, "I have been involved in state politics in the past." Can you be more specific with that? What have you done? On the state level?
Back in the, back in the day, this will actually have some relevance here lately is, back when I was in my twenties, I was involved in the American Party, the throwback off Ross Perot, and, and we had the American Party with Ross Perot's success. Actually, I was the treasurer of that party.
Okay.
For a period of time.
Okay.
Actually, our governor candidate was involved in that also, New Buell, I mean, he was, he was the vice president, I believe. Took me a few weeks to realize, I knew the name, but it took me a while to figure it out why, but.
Good. And then you say you and your wife live here.
Mm-hmm.
You've been here 13 years, I think is what I read?
Yeah, we lived in Oregon City 13 years.
Yeah, 13 years. And then as far as your family, children, were they involved in the park system? Did they use the parks? I'm not sure their ages or anything, but I mean, they're.
They're 13, 15.
Oh, they're young, they're teenagers, okay.
Oh, you bet.
Perfect, so I guess the question then is, do they currently use? I wasn't sure their age, but.
No, no, we started late, okay?
No, no, that's fine, I just don't want to assume either way.
Yeah, you bet.
Do they currently use the system? I mean, you say you run a lot and you coach sports, are they involved in it too? Do they use the facility?
My, my son's a cross-country track, he's, he runs a lot. I know they run through the park systems.
Perfect.
And my daughter plays softball, they play tournament softball, so they're not around here too much, because, well, that's the way it is in Oregon City. So, but over the years, we've used them immensely.
Perfect.
As it for the kids.
Thank you.
Hello, Derek.
Hi.
Are you familiar with Clackamas Park?
Yes, I am.
Very good. And so my question to you, and one of the things that'll be on our agenda at some point in time, is master planning for that park to make improvements and adjustments of what's in there now. Do you have any ideas, if you were thinking about something offhand, obviously sport might be on your mind, but do you, do you, do you have any idea of what that park needs to do to maybe be more available to more people?
Well, you mentioned the sports, I know, I do do triathlons, I know the Cove Triathlon runs through, through there, and that's how I, the use of the Clackamas on the other side. I'm not even sure if it's open yet with the improvements they were doing and the restructuring with the river or whatnot back there. I know it's about the only local open swim area, so I do have a, you know, a concern, or not a concern, but dog in the race there as far as the use. The other side, I'm not, I'm not familiar with the, the problems or what would open it up, but as far as, you know, like the, the part that I do know, like the sports and triathlon, the open swim water type over there, that'd be nice, but.
And I think I'll ask you the same thing, is there anything else you would like to tell us about yourself in terms of this interview, selection process, something you want, that we might not have touched on that you'd like to expand on?
Well, willing to learn. I work with people, it's my job, I'm a manager, you know, 30 years. I, I get along. I mean, that's, that's my job.
All right.
I'm here, you know, my job every day is to get things done and, and work with a diverse group of people.
Thank you.
Do you have an additional question? Where's Crater High School?
Crater? Central Point, next to Muffet.
It's a good school.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I graduated from there, many years ago, and then, and I lived up, I lived all up down the coast, and then we lived up here for quite a few years, and then actually worked, took me down to Grants Pass for four years, where we had the kids, and it's where my family was, so it was like, hey, support. So, and then, yeah, and we moved back up here 13 years ago, so it turned out really good, yeah.
Great. Any other questions?
No.
Okay. Derek, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, did you want to invite Sean over to interview as well?
I'm, I'm torn, because I think, excuse me, I think the term, the term limit piece is pretty clear, so I don't know that we could ask to have him reappointed. I think we would definitely want him to stay on until we get another candidate or applicants to interview.
Chris?
Yes.
As a mayor, go ahead.
As much as I would love to have Troy appointed member emeritus and never go away here.
Troy?
Not Sean, I'm sorry. Let me take that back, definitely Troy, no, never member emeritus. Sean, yes, be on it for a lifetime. The language is really clear, and it does not say until, you know, in elected office, you serve until someone else is sworn in. So if no one's sworn in, you get to stick it out. This is very clear that the term is three years and you can only serve two consecutive terms. I really don't see a hedge around that unless in January we choose to revise our bylaws.
Well, it sounds also like we might have some more candidates as the mayor's directed Phil to open, reopen the candidate pool and extend that through. Did he give you a time limit of when?
No, he just, you know, we'll, we'll keep it open until we have enough applicants to be able to interview. I know we do have one other applicant who has, he had a trip of a lifetime kind of thing, he's in Tahiti for, I think, two weeks and had been waiting quite a while to go and was very bummed that he wasn't able to be here tonight for the interview. So he will be back in town, I believe, next week, and he'll be available for an interview at any point after that. In, again, the conversation with the city recorder, I was that it has been best practice amongst other committees, is that when there is a vacancy, if there is a member of the committee that would wish to stay on, if it is the, the will of the committee as a whole, to have that individual stay on until an appointment can be made, then we could move forward with having Sean continue on the committee until we have additional interviews and the mayor makes an appointment. The direction that I received from her additionally was that we could not have him stay on the committee to fulfill an additional term, because again, we have the two term limits, so he couldn't continue on another three-year term because he's served two consecutive terms. So, but he could extend his current term until we have an applicant that is positioned to be able to fill that in a permanent way.
So I think, I think the term limit piece is pretty clear, and I, I think the, the member makeup is also very clear in that we can only have two people from any given neighborhood association. So I think unfortunately it does make this more ineligible. That does concern me, though, that we don't have a viable candidate for the Pioneer Center of representation, which it sounds like that's important. I would like to keep Sean on forever.
This is a tough.
It, it is tough.
Does he have to sit out a year, or any member has to sit out a year before they can re-up again?
Yeah. So, so if I can, I can say a couple of things, and obviously you know where I want to stay, I don't want to leave, but as far as the rules go, I told Phil on the phone, probably in the last seven years, we haven't touched the rules, but in my first seven years, we touched the rules almost every year or two. And they were very flexible, so if it was, for example, the will of the group to appoint her because you had a viable candidate and you wanted to make an exception, that, you just make that as part of your recommendation. Ultimately, the bottom line is, it's mayorial appointment, and he can do what he wants. And so I think in the past, we have made various adjustments as the group saw fit. So I wouldn't personally let either of the rules hold you back from making a decision if you thought that candidate, I'm trying to speak openly, her or me, one or the other, or both, I wouldn't let that hold you back. I mean, we used to have seven on the board because we couldn't get nine, and then we sort of turned around and switched it to nine, and, you know, lots of things. And the, and I remember writing, being here when we voted on these particular rules in the discussions, and, and the two was a concern from the standpoint of one neighborhood association stacking the deck, but I think to Troy's standpoint, it's unfortunate, there's a lot of neighborhoods not represented, so sometimes why would we turn away an otherwise potentially wonderful candidate? And frankly, she hasn't been here long enough to get an axe to grind.
This is a good point.
I'm just throwing those out there. You guys.
Okay, I, I really, I hate to be a total stickler, but I'm a stickler, but this one's kind of easy to fix. If we notice it for January, that we're going to amend the bylaws, we change that to say, no more than two of the eight at-large members shall reside in the same neighborhood association. We can get past that, get it approved by the commission and have her appointed. We can just leave that vacant until we revise the bylaws.
Here's the challenge I have. I, I think your point is, well, taken, at the same time, we got to be transparent, and we're public, and.
How much are transparent?
Hang on a second, let me finish. And it, it just looks, it looks, smells and tastes bad when we change a rule to accommodate one person, which really is the way that's going to be viewed. Let's change it so we can bring her in. Sorry, Sean, we're not changing that one, in fact, we're not going to talk about it. That doesn't look good. I also think we need to really honor this process. Forget Sean for a minute, as by name, we have applications that have been presented to us. I think we have a responsibility to review them, interview the people, just like we did with Mrs. Miller, knowing that she's not eligible, and then we listen to her anyway. And I think we listen to Sean because he turned in an application and he deserves us to listen to him. And in the end, if we say, "Sorry, Sean, our rules don't allow us to, sorry, Mrs. Miller, our rules don't allow us to," that's fine, but these are our citizens that after this process are going to go out and talk about what they, their experience here, and they're going to talk about the city of Oregon City and the Parks Department, let's give them a good experience and listen to people. And that's what we're always criticized for, is not listening. Put them in the hot seat, let's listen to them, and then we can make a decision. And if we have to make a decision based on the rules, then we'll do that.
And I disagree, it's not transparent, because my reading of that bylaw is that it was meant to apply to the at-large members. This would just be a clarification of that, it's not a hedge around.
But it didn't say that.
Because it does, you know, in this case, it's excluding someone that's a viable candidate that the staff has asked, and it's a special spot. You've got one place in the bylaws that's set apart, the other place in the bylaws that's not set apart, I'm saying we should make the two parts of the bylaws conform to each other and set it apart in that other section.
And I think, I think that's a discussion that maybe we'd have, but as it's written right here as we're looking at it, it is what it is of this. Yep. And I personally believe it was written that way for a reason. And, and I, I think we would be doing a disservice to the community if we don't continue to keep the positions open and solicit more applicants and hopefully fill the seat or seats with more people from these neighborhood associations that are not represented here. We need diversity on this committee. I would love to have one from each neighborhood association. That, that gives us a true community representation, that's the way it should be. Unfortunately, we don't have people, enough people that want to get involved, but I think keeping it open until we do find the right person is the right thing to do, and Sean is more than willing to, to fill the need until that happens. I think that's the path we should go down. So if we, if we need to hear Sean answer the questions that he knows all the answers to, we can go through that process.
Yeah, but we might not like his answers.
And I, and I will say, really, really quickly to muddy the water a little bit more for you, so in the bylaws, chapter seven states for the amendments, modifications of these bylaws must be approved by the city commission before they become effective, but under number two, it says, "The procedure to recommend modifications of the bylaws to the city commission shall be unitless A, B, C." So all recommendation, all recommended modifications are to be presented and discussed at a regular PRACT meeting, so we could, you know, again, to Karen's point, we could notice it. So we could, um, you know, again, to Karen's point, we could notice it, discuss it, make a recommendation. Recommendation of the city commission may be made at the same meeting if consensus is reached. A majority vote of the PrAC members present is necessary to recommend a change in the bylaws. We just have to vote a majority like all other measures. And then with a majority vote of the PrAC members, an exception to these bylaws for a specific and unique purpose may be presented to the city commission for approval and implementation. So I don't know if that is considered.
Oh, and that's the piece that I remember we put in there specifically because we got tired of rewriting them. I'm honest, I mean, very, very clear that's why, because we were rewriting them all the time.
So in reading that part, um, if, if it was voted by this group, uh, it sounds like maybe this group could ask for an exception for a unique purpose, uh, for approval and implementation. So again, we can't make any decisions during the work session. Uh, we can continue and we have it as one of the items in the regular session and we can definitely continue this conversation. I guess the, the question for the group and if Chris as the chair chooses to move forward in this direction is if, whether or not we interview Sean and then continue that conversation.
And an example for you, I'll, I'll save you on that one, Chris, is we didn't interview Doug. We specifically made an exception to the bylaw using.
Like you interviewed Doug?
Yeah, we interviewed Doug.
The first time.
Long time ago?
Well, no, when you were done with mayor, remember we extended an invitation to you to join this group and you didn't come, you were still mayor when we did interviews. You didn't appoint yourself.
You guys didn't interview, that's your fault.
But that's a perfect example. So I don't know, five years ago or, or so, uh, at this meeting, we, we had a vacant seat after all. So we had three openings, we had two candidates and so part of the motion was to extend an invitation to the outgoing mayor if he would sit on this board. And that was a prime example of where that was used.
It won't work with them maybe because he lives in a go off neighborhood.
Also, we didn't have public interviews. We had a piece on that.
Right? Yeah, yeah, lots of things have changed, but an example of not interviewing and bringing a candidate on was Doug.
One last question, work session related. Why did you redact their addresses? I didn't get an answer that.
Katie did that, didn't she?
Yeah, it's done at the, um, it, it was done by the city recorder's office.
For confidentiality.
But why are they starting that now? I didn't understand the reason.
I didn't ask, but I can follow up if you'd like.
Frankly, I thought it was a good idea, but I would think that at least then we should add a line to what neighborhood you live in.
Oh, what do you read us?
I don't need to know your address, I just need to know your neighborhood.
So I was aware that Katie had kept the applications open. I haven't seen anything actively recruiting people to apply. I think maybe we need to get the word out, especially to the neighborhoods that don't have somebody now. But technically, if in January then, there is no other applicant for the Pioneer Center, we could vote to make, to recommend to the city commission that they approve requesting that the mayor appoint her in exception to, that only two people per neighborhood. Then it doesn't change the rule, it doesn't set a precedent, it's a single exception.
The challenge we have is time though, to some extent because I, I, I can't speak for the mayor, nor will I try. At the same time, I would imagine he would say, let's wait till the end of the process and see what we have before you make a recommendation.
No, he makes his, he makes his appointments for now.
Well, that's my, that's exactly my point.
Effective January 1st.
Well, that's, well, that's exactly my point, but he's.
But he's keeping it open, so he's probably not going to make a recommendation.
Certainly to leave it open. And so my, I, my suspicion would be, he would say, let's wait till it's actually closed to see what there is because that request for an exception may not be necessary. We don't know.
But by January, it probably needs to be closed. Technically by the end of the month, it should be.
Is there which one that?
Keeping it or closing it in January. I mean, we, we should continue to solicit or, or get applicants till we have a viable candidate. Why, why would we close it if we don't have a candidate?
Well, no, I was just only saying, I suspect the mayor will not want to hear our request for an exception until it's closed, which whenever that is, right?
So closing, closing the loop on, on one of the original questions here, is, does this group feel a need to interview Sean?
No.
No.
Yes. Whatever expressed by you, so I'm just answering your question.
Go interview and go over pizza.
I think, this is my feeling, listening to everything and it's a tough call, but I think that still, in my humble opinion, the Pioneer Center is separate but equal. And I think Ms. Miller would be a fine candidate. Now, in the other situation with Sean, it would be wonderful. I do think that we should interview other candidates, leave it open till whatever time the mayor decides to close it, um, interview this other individual and humbly ask Sean if he will stay on. And if we cannot find a viable candidate, then ask for the exception.
So, so going back to the Pioneer Center position and that interview, does everybody feel that candidate was a good candidate?
No.
I don't either.
No.
Based on the answers that I heard, um, and granted, she's new to the community, um, but, but I don't think she really answered any of the questions. I mean, we, we had to really kind of pull and extract things from her and, and poke and prod and, and I didn't get an, an answer to the, to the questions I, I was hearing. So I, based on that, I don't, I would not vote to recommend her for that role.
I felt that she was honest and she would try hard.
Sure. Absolutely.
In my opinion, knowing the Pioneer Center, I don't know if you're going to get a better candidate. And if Kathy asked her personally, then I, I would take her opinion and advise, advise on that because Kathy's pretty good with people there and she knows her people there, who, who comes in and out. And that's where, that's where I'm going to leave it.
I think that's right. I think if it's, I think if it's a special position and, I mean, I, I just kind of disappointed you, no, the swimming pool is part of the, the parks system, but it is a special position. Fourth, the Pioneer Community Center. And I agree, if, if, if the director of the Pioneer Community Center, I wouldn't feel comfortable with her being it, then that's one thing. But if in fact she thinks based on her program and so forth, that she represents the Pioneer Community Center, from mindset point, it's okay. And then, well, be sure that she knows when she comes on, there is a swimming pool.
I would, I would follow up with Roger and Doug on that. I've seen probably five Pioneer reps in my time. Roger, I'm not kidding you, by far. But I think his point to the candidates is accurate.
And, and just throwing this out there, um, I did have a very short conversation with Kathy before the meeting tonight and asked her about the history of the Pioneer specific position and whether or not she, you know, how, because she expressed to me it's difficult to find candidates that are willing to, to serve as the Pioneer rep. And I asked her about the, kind of the history of having the Pioneer rep and whether or not she feels that users would be, um, would be upset with if we no longer had a Pioneer rep, if we just had another at-large position. She said when the, um, Community Center was originally implemented, there was a lot of fundraising, it's a very large community kind of event and focus. And there's a lot of folks that were interested in making sure that there was representation from the Pioneer Center. But she does not feel at this point that there would be a, a big backlash if we did not have a specific Pioneer Center representation. We don't have, again, we don't have for other areas within, you know, the pool or the cemetery or other areas. Again, this is a conversation we could have if, you know, we open up the bylaws to look at them and really develop, you know, be clear in what you want. If it's just two, period. If we want to make an exception for the Pioneer Center rep position specifically, um, or if we just want to have, uh, nine members all at-large and none of them designated for a specific purpose.
Well, and I, I've got to say that as much as I appreciate Roger's reports, we get a complete report from Denise and I've been curious as to why we had a Pioneer Center rep. Roger always adds something and it's wonderful. But, um, you know, staff seems to keep us well informed on every element of the department. And I was curious myself why Pioneer Center had a specific, someone designated.
To Sean's point, it's, it's been difficult to find folks that are interested and, and again, I appreciate Roger's contributions. Yeah, and his willingness to step outside of the Pioneer Center and obviously has a good sense of the system as a whole. But yeah, whether or not that's needed, whether or not the group feels that's still a need for, for this board, for this committee.
So the thing is, we're tying two different things together. Should we have a Pioneer rep or they're, we have a person that might be able to make that representation? We're talking about different, different things in here and I don't want to have our discussions of our bylaws driven by whether a given candidate is going to be on the, is going to be on this board. I think that's a mistake. And so, uh, if, uh, we, we have the bylaws as written, I, I don't think we should deviate from the bylaws as written. Changing the bylaws should be a, a process unto itself.
I agree. And, and I think for the purpose of this evening's special work session, we keep it to the interview process, the candidates and, um, what they brought to the table. And so based on that, can we make a recommendation on at least one of the, the folks we heard from tonight or we have to wait until we have the candidates in or I, I, I'm just trying to clarify.
You've got to request to extend it anyway for the mayor, right?
We need to close the, the work session, open up the general session. We can't make a recommendation until we're in a, a general session. But, um, at the, the end of this, you can decide whether or not you want to recommend one, two, three positions. And again, it's the mayor's decision how many positions he appoints or, um, doesn't appoint. If you choose to hold the positions, all of them open and make a recommendation later after maybe having additional candidates interview, again, that's to the committee to decide if you want to do that.
Chris, my comment, I think I answered your question though, is I don't see why under six E tonight, we don't appoint the one valid candidate to start serving a full term in January.
I'm, I'm gonna suggest we go into a regular meeting and have the discussion where we can actually make a motion.
And that's fine. So let's go ahead and close out the work session, take a five-minute break. It's the first time we had anybody in the crowd.
Yeah, I thought, I saw Troy the other day and he was kind of here.
This is our, um, December 6th, 2018 regular session for Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. Do a, um, call to order and introduction, starting with Roger.
Um, Roger Fowler-Teis.
Karen Moy.
Doug Neely.
Chris Cook.
Lisa Novak.
Sean Dassler.
Troy Baldinger. Bill Daniels.
Oh, Phil Lewis.
I'm from Yonkers. And, um, has everybody had a chance to review the minutes from the last meeting on October 25th?
Yes.
Yes, I make a motion to approve them as written.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm fully abstained.
Curious. Okay, um, doesn't appear we have any citizen confidence. That's the first in quite a while. No presentations and we're on to general business.
Well done, Phil.
Parks and Recreation funding.
Great. Uh, so this is at this point, just a, um, a holding item. This will be a, a regular updated item on all of our future meetings. As you're aware, during the November joint meeting between PrAC and the city commission, uh, we received some direction to kind of move forward with, um, initiating some of the process. So we'll be, um, starting to pull out a citizen advisory, um, committee to kind of, um, take in information, give feedback, uh, which will then, how I would envision it is probably a subcommittee of this group, which would then offer a recommendation to PrAC, who would then make a recommendation to the city commission. We have not at this point, um, made a determination how many will be on that citizen advisory committee, how many, uh, representation of this group would be included. If there are strong feelings from this group, we could probably have that discussion now how many, you know, I know for the naming committee as an example, we have two represent, representatives of this group that serve on the naming committee. Is that something that you feel would be sufficient? So I guess I'll open it up to discussion on that front.
I would suggest two people, just, that's my personal.
I think two is good, including, I would specify including the chair typically. They're the leader of the group that year.
Where's my term at? Since we're going over the bylaws, um, I would, I would also, um, recommend Troy being on as part of that. He's got great experience with the school board and their bond measure. I think that would be a, a good role for you.
And how will you address for citizen, uh, participation other than the folks on our board here?
Yeah, to, to this point, we have not determined what that, what that makeup would look like. Um, I, I'm assuming we would probably put out a call to, uh, to individuals to have them apply to, to serve on that group. Uh, we would probably also have, you know, key folks that we'd reach out to representing , uh, specific areas. But again, we have not determined what that group looks like. I just want, knowing that we don't meet again until the end of January, um, wanting to maybe get some feedback on, um, what this, what this committee thinks before moving forward with starting to, to draw out that process.
I, I have an individual I think I mentioned to you and I know that he would be helpful in this process and, and so I, he retired from Metro as chief operations officer for the parks system, living in our community and, um, currently not on any board. So I would still keep in touch with him. I know he'd probably be beneficial to have on your ad hoc committee.
Yeah.
So is there a way to go through the process as far as nominations for people? Did you just say that we probably wouldn't be involved with getting additional citizens until when?
Yeah, so I, I would envision that probably within the next couple of weeks, uh, we'll probably put out a call to, you know, we'll establish that structure, um, and put out a call to have individuals apply for, uh, serving on that group. It would make sense to me at this meeting, maybe if it sounds like there's, uh, support for having the chair, which wouldn't be selected until our January meeting, uh, for the next year, but you know, to have the chair and then, uh, it sounds like some individuals would like to have Troy as a second.
Chair and then that message you. Unless he's the chair.
Would you anticipate that you could, you could, you could, uh, bullet point the scope of the, of the mission of the, of the ad hoc committee as far as what their scope would be, what they're looking, trying to achieve for you or for this group?
Yeah, so the, the citizen advisory committee would be, um, again, to serve as a, a standing board and then make a formal recommendation to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. Uh, we anticipate that we'll be doing some, uh, public polling, um, any of that data as it comes back to staff. Uh, we would use, um, that to kind of start the, the conversation with, uh, the advisory committee or, or task force and then, uh, continue to have a conversation around, you know, what the, the best steps moving forward would look like. They would again, make that formal recommendation back to PrAC eventually and then PrAC would make the formal recommendation to the city commission, whether or not to move forward with, um, again, what the, what the funding looks like, whether we're going after, again, a bond, um, a utility fee, um, what dollar amount of, of funding we would go after, what projects would be included on those lists. So I have quite a bit of information to, to dig through.
A timeline, would you, would you have a, a date that you'd want to have a prepared statement for commission by?
Yeah, we're looking at a, a 12 to 18 month process. Uh, I would envision that we probably would not make a formal recommendation, um, until probably beginning of 2020, uh, looking at going to a public vote sometime in, uh, either the, um, the spring of 2020 or, um, if we don't hit that timeline, it would be the, the fall of 2020.
Let me put forward a question because various options were put forward in terms of that funding. Some of those options would not require a public vote. So, I mean, if that's the direction that the committee wants to go. So, I mean, if that's the direction that the committee wants to go, then we go that direction. But the several funds that were presented, two would not require a public vote.
Correct, yeah. And we do have a new commission that's taking office, starting in January. You know, we'll have a goal-setting meeting with the commission coming up, beginning of February of next year. And, you know, one of the requests of Park staff will be that we start looking at, again, the operations and needing to get additional FTE onboard to maintain the parks and facilities that we do have. We know that, you know, as we had that conversation with the joint meeting with commission and Prac, we have a deficit of about eight full-time positions in parks, and we have a deficit of about three full-time positions in our facilities maintenance. And so, trying to fill that gap as we can. Hopefully, we'll be able to do some of that during the budgeting process. If we can do additional work outside of that and through the advisory group, through the task force, we'll hopefully be able to do that as well. And yeah, many things to consider and hopefully get that recommendation.
Well, keep the soon-to-be-random citizen informed on the committee openings.
I'll make sure to reach out to Sean and let him know of the process.
So, who are the two people now? I know one.
The incoming chair and Troy.
Okay.
Okay, that's the recommendation.
So, I don't think we need to pick a formal vote or anything for this, but, so at this point, the recommendation of this group, sounds like the chair will be appointed in January, and then Troy as a second? And Troy, you're comfortable with serving on that group?
I think so. I mean, I'm comfortable on the group. You answered one question, which was the term. My number-one priority is being a father, and so it needs to fit into that first and foremost. And so, the term helps, but also how often it's going to meet. Certainly, my interest is there, and my commute is short, so I'm okay with all of that.
Have food.
But I would enjoy the opportunity, so as long as it works out, I'd be happy to.
Great. Thank you very much.
I can't do better, I'm not here either.
Okay, moving on. Buena Vista House. Excellent. So, I have a couple of slides that I'd like to use for the presentation for the Buena Vista House.
Jim? No, thank you. Well, he did, he took my replacement on the board.
Oh!
Yes.
And the chroma.
No.
And I guess we don't have any members of the community that need to see the overhead one, so hopefully.
That's what I just said.
We don't need to dim the lights, I guess.
Speaking of the mic next time.
Oh, okay.
Phil, going back to the previous gen item, we were just talking about the name. He's also a former Prac member and Metro Parks employee that he's talking about, so if he can get you that name after the meeting, he would be a very good candidate.
Great, perfect. So, we're going to talk a little bit about the Buena Vista House. I did want to give an update on some recent activity there, as Bill emailed me earlier this week to check in a little bit. So, we did, we've been working with the stakeholder group to work on getting cost estimates for what it would take to get electricity and heat into the building. We were meeting with a contractor out there last week, and a transient had broken into the house, and was using it as a temporary shelter. Had caused some damage to the interior of the house, had scraped in some of the windows on the interior, I'm assuming so people couldn't see in, and had made a general mess of kind of the facilities, had broken a section out on the window going into the bathroom so that he could get in. So, there's some damage, not permanent in nature for the most part, and there was quite a few of his belongings that were left after he left. We did work with Oregon City Police Department, and the individual was removed from the structure. We re-secured the building, and everything is back to as normal as it can be there, but wanted to update you on that. I know that's been a concern of the stakeholder group. And to date, we, again, this is the first time this has happened, or we've had any vandalism, honestly, at that site since I've been here. The same individual had at one point broken into the restroom facility at the park a few months back, maybe six or seven months back as well. And we do have, again, vandalism at various locations from time to time, and, you know, unfortunately, it happened here. I know that the stakeholder group is looking to get additional lighting and things, and that definitely would help, but I can imagine this might have happened regardless of whether or not we had lighting or obviously heat in the building. He did, it looks like he was trying to light the pilot light for the old gas heater that was, the wall heater that's there. The gas is turned off and disconnected, so there was no issues there, but, you know, obviously, it's difficult when the weather gets cold and is looking for somewhere to be, and found a vacant house. So, wanted to give you an update on that. Additionally, we did receive an estimate back from the electrician that came out to do the work, which was just under $5,000. I can pass around the estimates if you're interested. Additionally, we had an electrician come out and look at doing just the grounding work for the outlets in the building, which would be just under $1,000 to have that done additionally. So, you're looking at about $6,000 for the electrical work. This would include some wall heating, electrical, heating units, as well as installing some lighting on the exterior of the building.
Well, this is unrelated to the transient break-in.
This is unrelated to the transient break-in, yep, correct. I did want to go through, again, we've had several conversations around, additionally around the cost of the Buena Vista House and what that would look like, so I wanted to go through, again, just a little bit of history. I realize some of you, we haven't really talked about the stakeholder group and kind of what we did and why we're here, where we're at at this point. So, in the spring of 2018, staff worked with a stakeholder group made of representation of this group. Roger and Karen represented Prac, as well as Bill was on that group, representing the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association. We had other representation from the neighborhood, including Todd Island, who lives across the street from the Buena Vista House and is an architect by trade. Additionally, Denise McGriff was there representing the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association. We met in the months of March and April. Additionally, the facilitator that we brought in to help walk us through the process did interviews with representatives before the full group sat down in March to kind of get a better sense of their thoughts and feelings on the space and what we might be able to do to move forward. At the conclusion of the meetings, Todd Island had volunteered to work on developing a scope of work that would be used, or it could be used to solicit bids or to get estimates on how much work it would take to get the house back and open for public use. And so, we did work with him on that and worked with planning and the building department to make sure that we had a scope of work that would be approved by our planning and building codes. Stakeholders also agreed to reach out to the Oregon City Park Foundation to act as the fiscal agent for the new Friends of Buena Vista House group, and it's my understanding that they have done that and that it seems like the Park Foundation is supportive. So, the construction estimates that we've received to date, so prior to having the revised scope of work, the city worked with a couple of responsive firms that have done public buildings in the area. PNC in April did an estimate for us, which came back at just over $1 million. Emmerich in May of 2018 did a similar estimate and came back at just over $800,000.
Hey, good.
And then, PNC came back and did a new revised estimate based on the additional scope of work detailed by Todd in August, which came back at just under $500,000. A big piece of the Todd Island scope of work compared to the other pieces, majority of it is around the foundation work. So, he is proposing doing a bracing foundation just on the corners and not doing a full foundation. Additionally, they did not take into consideration any design or engineering. There's no professional services line based on Todd's having volunteered his services for the project, and so there's some cost savings there as well. There were a couple of pieces that, again, that we were very broad in our conversations and the first estimates that we received around, you know, this is the building, if we were to bring it up to be used as a public space, give us a detail of what that would look like. And so, they included things on there which were not called out specifically in Todd's drawings. Todd's were a little bit more specific to the things it would take to get the building open versus the other two bids came back more of, or estimates came back more of a, you know, professional experience in knowing what it would take to, you know, rehab a structure like that to have it be open to the public. So, there were some examples, some, you know, redoing of like the floors or the roofing, whereas I think Todd's came back a little bit different than the other two. And so, there's a couple of minor variations between the two, but based on the scope of work, Todd did work with our planning department or building department to make sure that it would meet minimum specifications for a public building. Again, staff's perspective from Park staff is that if we were to open it up and really make an investment of, you know, a half-million dollars, that we probably should look at doing a full foundation like we would of any other public building to really make the structure last and be a permanent piece of our inventory. Doing a partial foundation for the long term, from our perspective, doesn't make a lot of sense to not just, because you're going to have to lift the entire structure up off the current, the current foundation and then repour and do everything. If you're going to do that, you might as well do a full, a full foundation, really make sure that it's there for the long term. It's also on a hillside, and again, it would have to be stamped either way by an engineer, but given the soils and shifting that can occur right next to the hillside, it would probably make a lot of sense to invest in doing a full foundation on a structure like that.
I would presume any modern structure would require full foundations in terms of just size, big requirements, would it?
Yeah, and again, not my area of expertise, and Todd is a licensed and bonded professional, but in the, and it would have to be stamped, engineer drawings would have to be stamped in order to pass the building officials' needs, but yeah, it would be probably advantageous for us to make sure that it was a full, a full foundation for the longevity of the structure. Better to do it once, right, than to have to come back later and do more work, which can often be more expensive. And thank you. So, that's where we're at. But I know we've had several conversations around, you know, where I've kind of just thrown the numbers out, and it's around this amount, it's around that amount. As we're digging into, I know that we have obviously some stakeholders that really want to get the electricity on and want to get heat in the building, and we're going through those steps. I just want to make sure that this group understands the full breadth of what that full investment will look like eventually, if we're moving towards that and that we just have that conversation. So, with that, I'll open up to any discussion or questions or anything else you'd like to discuss.
This makes me wonder, ancient buildings, how they've survived so many years. I think of Notre Dame or the Tower of Pisa. All these years, how did they find funding for these buildings to last?
Tours.
But it'd be very difficult to really occupy the Tower of Pisa.
Well, that's true. Notre Dame, it could occupy.
I would just make a comment that in light of the recent list of funding deficiencies in the department, that just because we're discussing this doesn't mean it's first on the list. And in my opinion, we should be mindful that that list is $27 million, and at some point, there needs to be a priority list given, and so I would encourage you, especially as the new commission comes in, to not let things get taken out from under you and moved to the front of the list without having a valid discussion as to what the priority list really should look like. Because, you know, there's neighborhoods that are three miles from a park. Other issues like that that could be more important, there's new development going in that we haven't landbanked for. So, while I'd love to spend the money on this, that other list has still got me full of sticker shock.
That's true.
That's just my comments.
Well, the only thing is, this has potential with the Friends group forming for some fundraising, it also has grant potential. So, I think as long as we keep it a live subject before this group, that may help some of the outside fundraising.
We need to preserve our history. It's easy to bulldoze it down because it's cost-effective. But the people who are happiest when it's over with, that you save something even though it was a struggle, in the long run, that makes a big difference.
Right. And I guess to clarify my point, I don't disagree with you, but as you get new members in next year, those members sometimes just see what's on the agenda, but they lose sight of five years ago topics of Beaver Creek Concept Plan or Park Place, and all of a sudden, you know, just because Phil puts this on the agenda for the last three months, you think it's a big deal, when if you don't have the discussion, it maybe isn't as important as a couple of those other things.
And that makes me wonder, as a group, should we be prioritizing, once we get a little bit further along, our needs?
So, we used to, and this year, we postponed our goal-setting and never picked it back up, so next year, you guys really need to do that and pick it up. And generally, we put more emphasis, once the commission went to the two-year cycle, we put more emphasis on that two-year. So, this next year, you know, multiple work sessions early in the year to get that nailed down. And my personal opinion was always putting things on there that are tangible, that you can accomplish in that time, and then a few beyond it that are your next ones to then move on the list. Don't just throw stuff on the wall that you really can't touch. And if you look at our recent list, we've accomplished those.
Yeah, I think that's good, but if we're looking for the funding, I mean, it comes to your priority list really too, but if we're looking to move to taxpayer funding or funding through utility bills or whatever, we have to have a long-range view of it. It can't be what we're doing this year and a few for the next two-year period, because in order to push that forward, people have to be aware of, A, a really deficient, and B, what's needed for it.
Yeah, well, I think it all comes together in the Parks Master Plan that hasn't been revisited in how many years? And I think we use that as kind of the catalyst to set the priorities and have that long-term vision. Because I think, I think back when that was made, we had a long-term vision, way before my time, and it's now time to revisit that and reset. And I think that's something that should occur next year as well.
Are we still on Buena Vista?
Yeah, she got three.
Every month.
So, a couple of things, and I don't know if you were going to mention any... A couple of things, and I don't know if you were going to mention, or if you were going to say anything, Bill?
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Well, we, Bill came to the foundation, Parks Foundation meeting, and regarding getting enough electricity to keep the place warm enough so that it can stabilize it to be able to go forward. And the the foundation agreed to donate up to fifteen hundred dollars. And then the.
Our McLaughlin Neighborhood Association is meeting tonight, same time, and we're putting a motion forward for that, that kind of a donation from them as well.
Wow, you're getting there.
So so just to get it to that point, and in the past, I've seen grants in a lot of historical building grants in there, out there, and to, you know, maybe that would help with this and wouldn't even be on, you know, it'd be above and beyond what what the city or the Parks Department, you know, would have put in. You know, the only question we had was how much, one of the members asked how much it costs to to provide electricity to the house per month. So and we didn't, that wasn't in that we were, I don't know if you brought that answer to that question to Phil.
Yeah. Baseboard heating is a little bit more expensive than standard heating. We wouldn't have to keep it at the same level, so as you would if your house.
Right.
It's not a huge space, but it's also not well insulated or, you know, it's not, doesn't have some of those same things. So it, you know, wouldn't be overly expensive, but it would be an ongoing recurring cost for for the department.
So I would encourage you to reach out to PGE. They could actually give you an estimate based on what you have in there. They they could provide that estimate for you based on the appliances.
I think we discussed it at the meeting, right? To get, what was that called? Did they get an assessment for the building itself? And I think somebody looked it up and it was, it was on the list of of buildings that PGE would come in and give you an estimate on.
For an energy audit?
It's it's, yeah, it's an energy audit. It's free, it's a free, free charge. So I could, I could actually find, I can get you anything.
There are some very small, inefficient heaters available that would just keep it warm enough so that it keep the mold out and.
Moisture.
Moisture. That's what we're looking at.
I'll find a, I'll find a name for you, a resource at PGE that will come out and do the audit for you. Or at least, it wouldn't be like an audit where they're actually looking at what's in there now, but you can provide like this estimate that you have today, what you, what the need is, and they could provide an estimate. What do it cost monthly? And they probably have to look at, there's probably no insulation in that place whatsoever.
Newspaper.
But, you know, I just want to say one more thing. I think I mentioned that we, last year or a year and a half, we took a trip up to Port Townsend. And just to see a city very similar to Oregon City, in in the way it's laid out, and that the downtown is lower down, just like we have here. But the the amount of work that this, and it's with a population of nine thousand people. And what they're doing to their downtown is just amazing. And and how they're saving all their old buildings and, you know, just keeping that history right there is just, I mean, mind-boggling to see and just wonderful. And and the amount of energy that's driving from that, from the citizens that really appreciate their city and the tourism that is attracted with it and the money. So that, you know, just just to lay out those thoughts going forward.
Of course, Oregon City's done a great job, and it is downtown, too.
Any other discussion around Buena Vista House? Thanks, Phil.
Willamette Falls Legacy Project. Anything new there? So the Willamette Falls Legacy Project, we have a RFP which closed recently for design services for the Phase One development of the Riverwalk. They closed on November twenty ninth. We are anticipating probably making an announcement sometime mid-December. And we also have a December twentieth partners meeting, so that's all the elected officials from all of the agencies that are involved in in the project. So it's a public meeting, everyone is welcome to attend. That will be the Dayton, I'm sorry, the the time and location will be announced shortly, but it is scheduled for December twentieth. Other than that, we are still moving forward with kind of the general timeline that we are anticipating breaking ground sometime in the spring of 2020. And, you know, we're obviously a little bit behind schedule on that to date, but we're hoping we can ramp up and and get things going quickly on that. Prac annual election of officers. So this is just a reminder item. The first meeting in January will be your opportunity to elect your chair and vice chair. So just putting that out there for any members, it will still be with us coming January one. If you have an interest or if you think someone would be well-suited for one of those leadership positions on this committee that may make yourself known or make it known that you think someone else would be a good leader for this group and and touch base with them, but we'll be accepting nominations at the the first part of the January meeting for the chair and vice chair positions.
And that's on twenty fourth, sorry?
Ooh, I should have that. Yes, January twenty fourth.
Prac member position openings, appointment recommendations, back to the conversation.
I'm going to make a motion that we request that the, we accept, we accept applications up to the next meeting, and that we do not make any decisions on, at recommending appointments until you've had an opportunity to interview more candidates.
I second that motion.
So just a question for the group, and why wouldn't we consider the one candidate we had tonight that we know is eligible?
Because we don't, we don't know what the other candidate is, huh?
But we have two other open positions too, so.
But you may get five applications.
I'm I'm fine with that. So there's a motion on the committee?
So we have a motion, a second, we can continue the conversation unless you want me to to take a vote?
Any other conversation?
I'll have one afterwards.
Take a vote. Okay, so we have a motion on the the table to hold on any recommendations until we have a full pool and additional interviews. Is that correct?
Clarification, is this, this is, are you talking about the Pioneer Center position?
We're talking about everything right now.
Both.
Both.
Three.
Because it's still open, everything.
Everything would be open.
But do we, are we saying that Ms. Miller is still eligible?
Yeah.
Because I don't, I don't think that's the case.
Well.
Based on the bylaws?
Yeah.
So my my point is, I don't want, I don't want to leave her hanging.
I agree.
Thinking that she might get a position if she's not eligible.
So are we interpreting, I mean, I wasn't clear on when we had that discussion earlier, we're interpreting the fact that she lives in the McLaughlin neighborhood. It makes her ineligible to serve on a dedicated position, which is the, she's not one of the at-large members.
I'm going to, I'm going to request that the, I'm going to request that Mr. Lewis consult the attorney. We have these things with two different aspects of the bylaws, to consult the attorney whether or not, given that that position is covered in another part of the bylaws, whether the the second part of the bylaws is 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 relevant. And and I actually look for legal clarification on that.
That's a good point.
I can follow up.
And so we might have, you know, we might have it clear at that point, but it, so it may not be an issue of the attorney that makes interpretation, or the attorney may do it, actually do it before the next commission meeting. Because what the attorney may do is, it is up to, say to the commission, the commission can interpret its own code, and I think it could, and it could go to the bylaws as well, did that position separate from the other part of the bylaws? And my guess is nobody thought about the the two issues. So we could do that, and then we could have clarifications at the next meeting. And and not, and not, and not, and not tell her that she's not eligible at this point, that we can make a legal determination.
And that's fine. And my stance is, I think it was written that way for a reason.
Yeah, I think we did it intentionally when we wrote it. Two, no more than two, period. Was was very intentional at that time. But.
But I think that was for the at-large positions. I don't think it was for the dedicated position.
I think at the time, we were concerned that there, you may get four or five from one neighborhood association and say, and divert funding and everything else.
We were concerned about that, but it was a maximum of two at the at-large position. But the only dedicated position, it didn't matter what neighborhood they lived in.
So bottom line, we would like to have an opinion, and and it would probably might help, but maybe it won't, to to listen to this conversation tonight, when they, just to hear our thoughts on it.
Yeah, definitely. And I'm assuming between now and the next time we meet, we can have a determination. Hopefully, we'll have some additional candidates. We can hopefully schedule additional interviews and continue to move forward.
So the current motion stands unamended, just that we are going to keep the, or keep the positions or recommend that the positions stay open until we have more candidates?
So we need to amend that motion?
I don't think so. I think it's.
Sounds like you're all in, well, it sounds like you're in agreement with that.
So.
Do we have a first and a second? And unless there's further discussion, I can take role?
Yeah.
Daniels?
Aye.
Ballinger?
Aye.
Dashler?
Aye.
Novak?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Neely?
Aye.
Maury?
Aye.
Feller Tyce?
Aye.
And the motion passes. I guess the other, the other point of consideration is whether or not you would like to vote to have Sean continue in his current role until we have an appointment to fill that position.
So moved.
Second.
So a discussion would possibly, I thought about this as well. He could, will be any less of a problem, shall we say, if he was a non-voting member at the time. He could contribute as far as knowledge or opinions, but be a non-voting member, so he's actually not following a term through without having to sit out for that.
Consultant type of role, knowledge role.
Right.
I think the bylaws speak to that, though.
Yeah, that would be creating a kind of a new, any, any community members welcome to attend and give public comment during any of the topics. And so if somebody was not on the committee, they're welcome to attend a public meeting and give comment. I think that's basically the role that he would be serving in that, in that role. My interpretation of the is that we're asking if he wants to continue in his current role.
I think there's more value in having him as a voting member until we fill that role or those roles.
Well, and I've got to say, you've got three vacancies, and you're now recommending that one person be voted on to stay in one of those three positions.
We're, we're making a recommendation to the mayor to keep him on until we fill those.
In violation of the bylaws.
No, I think, no, the bylaws speak to this exception, right? Is if we have a member.
It's been acting practice to have a member continue if we do not have enough members to fill.
So precedent's been set.
So then technically, Mike and Roger also should be continued.
No. If they, if they're interested, I think, I think, I think if they're interested, we can make a motion for the same reason, but I would disagree that they then have to continue.
I'd be happy to have the motion, but those, 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 those positions that are vacant, if the, if the individuals are willing to serve in that capacity, I'll, I'll win the motion.
I'll second that. I think that's a good recommendation, and then they have the option of choosing to do that or not.
Yeah, I think for the continuity of of the committee and our, and our work, I think that makes sense.
But if they don't come two times, we have no excuse, we're going to boot them off.
That just tells you they didn't want to do that.
Yeah, that's right.
So do you want to clarify your motion again? Who made the motion?
Well, and I guess we have, I know.
I made the motion originally.
Just for information for the group, I know that Mike has said that he he does not have the time to continue with with this group. And so I imagine his, his response would be that's that he probably is, does not have time to continue. And and it might be of benefit to ask Roger if he's interested in continuing.
Well, we make time business for me, that's, that's part of it, too.
But in fairness, I made the motion, should they be allowed?
Yeah, I think, I think the motion should be to recommend that they are given the opportunity.
Absolutely.
And and based on the fact that we're continuing to keep the application process open.
Yeah.
So we're not going to meet the deadline of end of the year. And so I think that's where the question comes in.
So does somebody else want to try the motion?
Absolutely.
I'm clear on it.
We're drawing my motion.
Okay, then I'll second your withdrawal. And I will make a motion, just so we're more clear and muddy. I'll make a motion that we recommend that those, those whose terms are expiring, given, are given the option to continue until their positions are filled.
Second. Sorry, I'm making notes. Unless there's further comments, I can take role.
Please, I'm good.
Daniels?
Aye.
Ballinger?
Aye.
Dashler?
All abstain.
Well played. Novak?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Neely?
Aye.
Maury?
Aye.
Feller Tyce?
Aye.
And the motion carries.
Now, after the vote, I will just put out that I see right here, the next meeting is probably the first one in the last two years I will probably miss. It's my anniversary, and there's a higher authority I need to answer to on that day.
Bring her along.
I think it's a great night, there'll be snacks in the back. We'll call that dinner.
Veggie tray.
Higher authority wanting to apply for a position?
There you go.
There you go.
I would encourage it, but I guarantee I know the answer.
All right. Enter general business.
And we did have one item that Mr. Dashler wanted to bring up.
Oh, thank you. So dealing with membership, many years ago, we had, and I don't remember the reason, Scott Archer brought it to us, that there was a young man from the high school that wanted civic experience. And so we brought him on as a ex officio or non-voting member. And he sat right there, if you will, in a different room, but, and and participated in all the discussion, was part of the civic process. And for him, it was an educational opportunity, a resume builder. For us, we gained the benefit of speaking to somebody in that age bracket, and it worked very well. So recently, a gal I know from the VFW, whose son is trying to pad his resume for one of the military academies, was complaining openly, just her and I, about, he needs some sort of other civic involvement, and I don't have any idea what to do. And so this topic came up, and he's extremely interested. And so I brought it up to Chris and Phil. And and then when I reached out to Phil again the other day, his suggestion made a lot of sense, that if the group liked that idea, then we should just open it up and obviously interview that interested candidate. But maybe there's others that are more suitable, and that's part of the civic process he would have to learn. But so that's my suggestion. I never saw a downside to it. Obviously, if the student decides to be a non-participant and not show up, the rules would just apply the same, you know, a couple times, you don't show up, you're done, and things like that. But there's really no downside to it, and there wasn't when we did it in the past. So I'll throw that out there.
I think it's an awesome idea. I mean, I've, I've had experience working with interns at my job, and I, I know that does nothing but help them and and prepare them for the real world. I think it's a great idea.
Is that back to needing a bylaw revision?
If this person's a non-voting, if this person's a non-voting position, I'm not sure we have to worry too much about it.
Well, and that could be one of these special votes by the commission. We could vote to create an ex officio position for a student and ask the commission to approve it. That's that other nice little bylaw in there that says we can do that.
Yeah, I, I think it's a great idea. I mean, it's always good.
I love it.
Information from folks from different backgrounds and to, you know, I really appreciate you bringing this forward because I, I think it would be something that, you know, maybe you would look at reaching out to the, the high school and reaching out to all like junior classes, you know, for future years and saying, you know, starting, you know, August of every year or September of every year, we have a, we have a high school senior that serves in that capacity or a high school junior, whatever we determine, might be a good idea to wrap it around a school year kind of commitment as opposed to a calendar year commitment for that group.
So Phil, could you consult staff and find out what exactly we would need to do on this side to make that happen?
Yeah, definitely. I'm assuming, so the individual probably would be interested in interviewing sooner than later for, for a position. We could probably put out that if, if you guys are in agreement and it sounds like everyone is generally supportive, we could probably put out additional advertising for not only the open positions for the actual position, but for this new position as well.
Yes.
And maybe find out, determine whether we really need a bylaw component if the person's a non-voting member. My concern is that if, if it doesn't work out in the long run to keep people, that we go through this process of trying to recruit some position, that we're not going to be able to find anybody to fill. And if it's not, if we don't have to go through that formal, I mean, we want to do it when, now, but if we find out that we, it's not a long-term viable thing, it'd be just nice to not have in our bylaws to deal with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, the other thing to consider, though, is if, if this person doesn't pan out or show up, what's the removal process or what's the, the formal process for finding somebody else to fill that role? So that's why I would like to have staff's opinion on that.
Yeah, I can do some research and figure out a best case to move forward and I'll just communicate through email with the group.
Yeah, that, I mean, that said, I, I think we want to move on this, not wait till our next meeting and, and get a position or an opinion either way.
Yeah, yeah, I can, I can research the best, best way to move forward. And then again, hopefully we can start advertising for it and then hopefully whenever we interview for the other positions, we can also interview for this position.
And when you mentioned advertising, are you, are you speaking to like our social media?
Social media platforms, yeah.
Chris?
Yes.
Recommendation I have on that, you mentioned a junior or senior. I would recommend we don't attach it to a graduating or a class name. It's just so we can, it can also include those who may be homeschooled, maybe aren't attached through some other college program that they're in, that they're not necessarily a junior or a senior or a sophomore. And then I would recommend that maybe we consider starting that not September, but rather October. So school is underway. We can use the student body, political classes and different things like that to kind of gain interest. Maybe then applications possibly through the end of September, start in October and maybe go 12 months or maybe have it just be through end of June or something. Just understanding that some of those kids are going to be busy in the summer, they're going to want to move on and they're just not going to be able to be here. And we don't want to have them say, well, gosh, I'm going to miss two meetings. I'm not even going to ask. Good point. Just a couple of ideas I have.
Yeah, I would concur with both, both those. In fact, in this particular case, he's a sophomore because by the time you're a junior, you need to know where you're going, truth.
I would suggest a, 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 some level of class level, maybe high school.
I don't, I mean, they're. Well, you can put an age.
Yeah, that's.
You can put 16. I mean, we're late at night, they're going to be driving home. You have some things to consider.
We're deciding now, is can we do this at this point?
Yeah.
We'll be coming in and we can have a further discussion about the process.
Except for the fact 16's a junior.
Or 15 or whatever.
Yeah.
You know, and understanding the time of night and whatnot.
And I think you guys should all know that chances are they're going to be intimidated and, and a little skittish. And, and I found myself pulling the answers out, but the answers you've received were really good. You just needed to kind of, oh, by the, so what do you think? You know, you need to kind of bring it out of whoever there.
This group intimidates me too, so it's all right. Don't get over it.
And you feed you.
And you feed me. Okay. Member reports?
Roger?
Pioneer updates, Pioneer Center updates. Three pioneers giving trees are up and all the tags are taken. More items are coming in regularly. Our fund rate, fundraising annual appeal was mailed and donations are returned daily. A final count will be given in January of accepted donations. Christmas wreaths were picked up and handed out last week. A few seed candy boxes are still available for sale, but this was a very popular fundraiser. Patron Christmas party will be December 21st with a catered meal from the bomber and a gift as well as a poinsettia to take home. The Pioneer Center will be closed the 24th and 25th of December. The Pioneer Center will be helping the Glassstone Senior Center deliver meals on wheels, um, excuse me, on wheels for several weeks until their kitchen is remodeled. As far as my, my, my own updates, I, I, as far as the funding, since I might not be here again after tonight, I like to, like either consider, I know this is getting ahead of, ahead of things, but just something to consider that in the past, the city has done a lot of open meetings at the library or the Pioneer Center and more of inviting the public in to be able to just, to be able to actively talk to them. And the funding, that, that might be a good, really good route to go and discuss funding, different funding approaches so that they can clearly understand it. And you could make a, a big event and invite groups like Doug's group, the Trails, I mean, uh, excuse me, the Water Shed and, or, you know, I don't think it's a Trails group anymore, I'm not sure. And the Parks Foundation would be probably happy to be there. And open it up and, and try to get people to come in and, and discuss it with them because that would be great PR ahead, ahead of, working ahead of getting people to understand the needs and, and what, what, what has to, what has to happen to help the parks. I'd, I'd like to take this time to, to thank Kathy Weisman and staff for letting me hold this position for, uh, here to represent them. And thank you, Phil, and, and the rest of you. It's been great working with you. And, you know, and I'm sorry to have to leave, but I, the Parks Foundation is just starting to take a lot of time. And my, the hours I'm working on parks is getting bigger than in my yard, so. So I'm up against that part. And that's it. Thank you.
Could I, before we go through there, I think he deserves a round of applause for his time.
So in November, the JROTC did their semi-annual cemetery cleaning and I was a wimp and didn't go. But the mayor graciously posted some photographs of the kids doing their usual excellent work. And they'll be back in May to spruce things up for Memorial Day. We're going to have another community cleanup either late April or mid-May. We're not quite sure at the moment. And we had a small but rousing Rivercrest Neighborhood Association meeting. There are still problems at the top of Waterboard Park. There was an incident where there was an assault and the police were called. And the neighbors are now getting together and at this point, they are circulating a petition to get more voices to come in on, yes, there's a problem, we need a solution. And the intention is at some point to present that at a city commission meeting. Because the people who live even two and three blocks away because of the traffic coming and going are very, very adversely affected by what's going on up there. So we've kept Phil and Jim Band and John Lewis in the loop on how they're feeling.
So it's just like the local hangout now?
Actually, from some of the information we've gotten from the police department, it's not local. This is not Oregon City people that are hanging out there. There may be a few, but they're coming in, drug deals, fights, loud music, language you really don't want to have to hear from your back deck. And, you know, we had the one fall over the summer and now an assault. So, and a lot of speeding traffic to and from the area. So not sure what'll be the final solution, but there are, the neighbors are banding together.
I'm going to reserve my comments because I would request that I, as the chair of the Natural Resource Committee, be put on to the, uh, presentation piece to talk about items that we have come forward with that we want to pursue in the coming by any and that would also affect parks and so forth. So I'll, I'll reserve that time for that, for that. I did want to make a comment on something and I don't question there's a problem up there, but it is, it is one of my weekly walking places that I go to and I go downtown to one of the bakeries. And the time period I hit there, there are teenagers there. I've sat and talked to them and they aren't involved in any of these activities. So, and I don't question that those things are going on. I don't misunderstand me. But my, my fear is that we do something that keeps you feeling that they're not wanted there even though their behavior doesn't warrant it. And so I just want to throw that out there. I mean, I, I sat and talked to those kids. They appeared, nothing to go, be, be going on in the cars. Not that we're even smoking or anything. They seem to be appreciating this great view. So I just want to make that comment.
Did you, you know, I've read the notes from your National Resources Committee. I picked it up.
Well, that's where they ended up.
You want this back?
Yes. That's what I will talk about.
And I noticed something about Waterboard Park in here being.
That's one of the things I would need you to talk about.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't have anything at this time.
Park Place Park went down walking yesterday. It's still not a park. It's still, there's still trucks, there's still construction vehicles. Is there any updates as far as?
Perpetual sewer work?
I have not been on site in the last week or so, but they are, they're wrapping up. The construction work has completed for the, for the pipe or to create the duplicate supply line system that they were trying to install. So that has been completed as of mid-November. We are working with them right now on, on replanting of trees on the property. They'll begin to start to move out of the, the park and then we'll probably see some additional refurbishing of the park as we move into the spring. So overseeding, aeration, those types of things to get the turf and things back into order.
Now, is that the contractor?
Correct.
Responsible? So funding is not an issue?
No, it's all part of the, the project and anticipated to be funded by the water district and the contractor.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So I have two things. The first one, I think that everybody in this group should be extremely proud that the commission last night voted to affirm Tyrone Woods Memorial Park. So that naming process is done and complete and was, while we had questions with the process, it was still by far probably the best process the city has ever undertaken. And we've learned and can improve it for the next time. So, and, and I wrote notes about you, Roger. I wanted to personally thank you for your time. You've been an inspiration to me. The amount of time you put into parks, I've seen your truck and the security cameras up at the VFW dumping bark dust, pulling weeds. I don't, I didn't realize how much time you put in until I really started kind of thinking about it and it's amazing. Plus, I don't know if this is totally accurate, but Mike likes to say that you're the inspiration and the reason the Oregon City Parks Foundation took off. And to me still, that is one of the best civic achievements in this city since I've been involved in doing this. Somebody actually took the idea and put it on paper and ran with that because that's exactly what we needed. Where else has somebody just decided, I'm going to create this wonderful nonprofit for something I see that's needed in my community and, and affect parks. That's why we're all here. So you've, you've inspired me. I hope that I am as active as you are when I am the Pioneer Community Center rep.
Perfect.
Thank you. That's very kind. Thank you.
I have nothing. Bill? Okay. Staff reports. So the recollection report you should have received from Denise via email. The Charter Park updates. So last night at the commission meeting, we had a second reading of Charter Parks for Kenyama Slope Park, Straight Pioneer Cemetery, Stafford Park and the Pioneer Center. So those are all now officially recognized as Charter Parks and have those protections. Old Kenyama Park received a first reading at the meeting last week and then we're anticipating the second reading coming up later on this month in December. We do still have a few other parks that are still waiting through the process of updating lines and, and doing some of the sign, behind the scenes work that, that needs to happen. The cemetery will most likely be the next one that moves forward. We just need to complete the ordinance language and the exhibits that will be attached to it and that should be coming forward. If not, at the end of December, then definitely beginning of the, the next year. And then the only other thing that I have to report again is the Tyrone's Woods naming, which again was a great experience to be at. Cheryl, Tyrone's mother, was very appreciative. She really wanted to thank this group. I talked with her in the hallway after the, after the meeting a little bit and she was just obviously moved and, and expressed her, her deep gratitude to, to this group and to staff and to everyone that was involved in the process. So again, I thank you for your thorough vetting of the naming and I think it will serve, to, to Sean's point, as an example for us moving forward. So, thank you.
Okay, feature agenda items. Any?
Clackenett Park.
And I think you need your goal setting.
And actually, I now second that because of some conversations I've been having about the Trailer Park.
RV Park?
RV Park location. So I second with Bill that the Clackenett planning needs to be done.
And I think to Sean's point, the goal setting needs to be discussed, at least some planning around that maybe in the next meeting. And then probably a discussion around the, the Parks Master Plan and what or when we can revisit that. That's probably a whole work, group of work sessions.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. And we do have, that's one of the items that staff have moved forward for consideration by the commission. So hopefully, you know, we, we recognize and I think we've had these conversations as a group that that's something that needs to be addressed and staff is committed to, to hopefully move that item forward.
That's probably an important point, too, when we go to interview more folks for these positions and, and that's probably going to be a, a time commitment unto itself, getting through that. So just.
I can do it.
Awareness for them.
Is there any discussion at the commission level of revisiting the comprehensive plan, which is pretty old at this point, the city's comprehensive plan? Do you know of any discussion at the city commission?
Each of the, so each of the department heads met with the city manager and to kind of go through items that we thought were important to move forward for consideration by the commission. I know that that's something that came up, I think, in the Planning Committee, or Commission, made a recommendation to the city commission at the last meeting as well. So I'm sure that'll be something that will be talked about.
The thing is, what you're suggesting is something that probably should be partially a focus of our effort in terms of the parks and what, in terms of comprehensive plans.
Is, and it is a component of the comprehensive plan adopted as such. Once it is adopted, so it will be a portion of the, the comp plan for the city.
Yeah, and the, the point is this would be a great opportunity to ask for input into the process.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
And Phil overstating the obvious, but I would recommend you send out the goals.
And Phil overstating the obvious, but I would recommend you send out the goals in an email to the group, and maybe since we've just discussed it, if you could do it in the next few days, and then, again, coming, you know, just before the January meeting, just so it's real front and center.
Yeah, I can send those out again.
Beneficial, I think.
Yeah, and I think within that email, solicit feedback from the group on what, you know, are the current goals we have earmarked sufficient or appropriate, and if not, then let's provide some ahead of that meeting, so we have some time to disseminate.
One of the fears we've had in the past was lack of framework, and so, I hope that somebody will kind of guide a framework, because it seems to me, if you have kind of a, like, when I was chair, I tried to say, "Here's what we can reach now, and here's those next, that next group of things," and to me, I can focus on that. And what I've seen happen in years past is, we lose focus because we can't, there's all these ideas, and we literally spend an hour of a meeting, and nothing hits the paper, and so, I would recommend that you guys contain that, or else you're going to have a problem.
When's the retreat?
The city commission retreat is February 1st, 2nd, I believe.
Okay, I would say with two new commissioners coming on, it might be a nice idea to hold our goals, do we see the city goals?
I have two, two opinions on that. One is, I don't think they ever, while they directly relate, I don't think that their goals ever really conflict. So, you can, and it's your guys' prerogative, I'll back out of that, but...
I, I think it's, it is helpful to start the conversation now, and if we feel like we need to hold off, that's great, but I think we need, just based on where I've seen conversations go on this committee, I think we need to have the conversation now and start, start documenting our thoughts and...
Well, and frankly, you could put, so, say, for example, you're able to get a draft in January, and Phil can take that draft to the retreat.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And, and that helps drive their conversation versus them driving yours.
Or, yeah, and they can provide feedback, too.
Absolutely, so.
A draft would be a good idea, I was just thinking about, if you finalize them.
Oh, no, yeah, and there's no need to do that, but get something on paper, I would recommend.
Will we see any more charter parks by the next meeting, nominations?
Possibly, yeah. We have a handful of parks, I think, five or six that you have not, well, actually, let me rephrase that, we have five or six that have not been adopted yet, or have been considered by the commission. We have probably, I think, four that you have not seen yet, which we should be bringing forward once we have additional information. Some of them are a little complicated, the promenade just has some, some wonkiness to...
Survey issue?
Yeah, just making sure you know the boundaries correctly, and, but I can, I can bring that forward. The other thing that, for future agenda item that will probably be on January, is discussing a piece of property that is part of the, well, was part of the Nool Creek Canyon master planning process, but it's actually owned by the city and considered a park property. So, deciding whether or not we want to work with the, work with Metro under a contract and agreement with them, an IGA, or whether or not we want to transfer ownership of the property to be used for part of the Nool Creek Canyon development. So, that'll be coming up in January, and then, we'll make a recommendation to the city commission, whether or not we should enter into an IGA, or transfer the property permanently to Metro.
Or do something else.
Not, not that I'm suggesting this is a discussion, but which property is that?
It's, oh goodness, 14 acres directly behind the cemetery property. There's a small development.
That oddball addition.
Yeah, so there's, if you remember when Metro staff was here and talked about the trail connecting to the neighborhood to the north, and it would have a trailhead, but not parking, dedicated parking or anything like that, it actually goes through that property to connect to that neighborhood.
Okay, I know where it goes.
Yeah. So, I'll have a presentation, visuals, and we can definitely have that conversation. Metro would prefer, obviously, to have ownership. I think the city's position is there, you know, it, it's gone through master planning process in our community, it'll be used for our community members, whether or not it's through an IGA or through a transfer, I think it'll be used for the better good, but, you know, we'll, we'll have that conversation for sure.
One last thing, actually, quick. Portland parks use these, a designation of what type of park that a user is looking at, and I saw those designations that Oregon City had on there, when we were looking at that first sheet of candidates for charter parks, and there was three different designations, the regional parks, our community parks, and our neighborhood parks, and then, fourth here, there's the special, special use parks. And I'm wondering if some of those parks, I mean, is, is there, there is a use of that designation for parks for the general public, in a sense, I mean, I, I know that, for instance, McLaughlin Promenade was called a special use park, and obviously, it's more than that, it's a, it's a community park now, and maybe at some point, it'll be a regional park, because we have so many tourists coming through there every day to see the development down below, so I'm wondering if there's maybe a possibility, not anytime soon, but to redesignate some of, well, all the parks to go over that designation once more. John, or you had an idea about which ones still needed modification?
We can, we can provide a presentation on the designation of the parks. There are some, the master plan, the 99 master plan lists kind of the, the definition of each of those areas, and what constitutes a regional park versus a community, versus a neighborhood, versus a pocket park, or a special use park, or I think Linear Park was also listed, which I think is what the promenades currently listed as. But, yeah, we can definitely provide that information and speak to how we're designating our parks, and what that really means for the user, and I think that, to your point, it's, it's more of the how the park is used, and what it means to the community.
With that, our next meeting's on January 24th. If there's nothing else, we'll adjourn.